One, two, three.
Good evening. My name is Rita Davis and I'm the Vice President of Voter Services of the Legal Women Voters of Plainfield. On behalf of our league, I'm pleased to welcome you to our first ward and at-large, second and third ward, Plainfield, City Council Candidates Forum. The league's partner in presenting this forum is Tapping to Plainfield, represented by Jennifer Popper. The Legal Women Voters is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. The league never supports or opposes candidates for office or political parties. Any use of the league name or footage from this forum in campaign materials, literature, or advertising of any kind, including internet, cable, or television, has not been authorized by the Legal Women Voters and is not permitted. The moderator for this forum is Laura Inglehart. Laura manages the New Providence, Berkeley Heights, and Summit Legal Women Voters Songs of Suffrages Project, a historical program about the American feminist movement. A published author, Laura graduated from Stanford Law School and Hamilton College and worked as an attorney and compliance officer in New York before founding Neutrality Now to provide arbitration and mediation services in New Jersey. During election season, Laura moderates candidate forums for the Legal Women Voters and provides information to voters through the league's text bank and election protections voter hotline. Laura, we thank you for moderating our forum.
Thank you very much, Ms. Davis. This year's primary elections will be held in person on June 7th. May 31st is the last day to apply for a mail-in ballot, and you can cast your vote by mail now through June 6th. Early-person voting will take place from June 3rd until June 5th at your county's early voting polling locations. And you can find those polling locations if you go to the New Jersey Voter Information Portal. There are four candidates seeking the Democratic nominee to serve on the Plainfield City Council. Candidates Robert Graham and Regina Lowry are running for the first ward council seat. And candidates Jolette Mills-Ransom and Robert Wyatt are running for the at-large, second and third wards council seat. We are pleased to welcome them all here tonight.
It's Richard Wyatt.
Oh, sorry. I apologize. Richard Wyatt.
There's a Robert and there's a Richard. Both start with R.
I apologize. Thank you very much for that. The winner of the June Democratic primary will be entered as the Democratic nominee in the general election in November. Each city council seat has a four-year term. And I'd like to thank the candidates for their cooperation and giving us their time and attention tonight. I'm going to go over the rules of the forum, and then we'll get started. Under the rules, all questions were required to be submitted in advance, and no additional questions will be accepted at this time. The candidates have already provided written answers to questions provided by the League of Women Voters. Excuse me. And their answers are included in the candidate forum booklet, which is available on Plainfield Legal Women Voters Facebook page. Then tap into Plainfield. Tonight, I'll be asking around nine to 10 questions that were posed by members of the public. In order to be efficient, we will only be using these questions. Tonight's event is being broadcast on YouTube and Facebook Live. You can watch the recorded program on these sites. So if you have to disconnect, you can watch the full event there. Before we begin the question round, each candidate will have two minutes to make an opening statement. During our question round, all candidates will have one minute to respond, and there will be no rebuttals. For all answers, the timekeeper will hold up a yellow card indicating when 15 seconds of their time remains, and the red card indicating the time to stop. After the question round, there will be an opportunity for each candidate to make their closing remarks. The speaking order will be the reverse order of the opening statements. For the question round, I used a randomizer to determine the speaking order. I'd like to now ask the candidates to offer a brief opening statement about their qualifications. Let's start with candidate Wyatt.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank Rita Davis, the moderators, the League of Women Voters for organizing this event tonight, the viewers for tuning in for the anticipated participation in the election on June 7th. I also like to thank everyone for their support, their faith in me, and for their continued commitment to a better Plainfield. My name is Richard Wyatt, and I'm a candidate for the Plainfield City Council, running in Column B with the Democrats for Progress in Plainfield. I'm privileged to know most of you, but for those that I haven't met yet, I'm a fourth-generation Plainfield resident, a graduate of Plainfield High, a father of three, city employee, philanthropist, and a devoted community activist. Our city is a beautiful place, but we are in need of progressive change. In the past, you've heard of me, advocate for fiscal responsibility, equity for all, code enforcement, pragmatic policy, improved quality of life, transparency, and honesty. My vision for our city and my beliefs remain the same. It's time for us to move beyond the petty politics and rubber stamping that prevent our city from achieving greatness and ensure error or checks and balances exist. And we work together to govern effectively for progress in Plainfield. Once again, I thank the members of the League of Women Voters for having me here this evening. And I look forward to the opportunity to discuss my platform. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Mills-Ransom.
Good evening. I am Jolette Mills-Ransom, and I am seeking reelection as councilperson for at-large for second and third wards. I also would like to thank the League of Women Voters for this evening's forum. I have been involved in serving the community of Plainfield for many years. Prior to becoming a council member, I was the league vice president for voter services. As a member of the Plainfield Board of Education, I served as chair of the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, vice president and president. During my tenure as president, I hosted a weekly 30-minute cable show with students as guests highlighting their activities and achievements. During the last two years on the board, I trained new board members for New Jersey School Board Association. As executive director, my church is nonprofit on, I successfully wrote two grants, one to upgrade the kitchen where meals are served every Wednesday and Thursday to anyone in need, and one for a six-week program to teach inquiry-based science to students in grades K through 12, K through 8, sorry. Currently on the council, I am a member of the Finance and Recreation Committees, liaison to the Special Improvement District, board member on Plainfield Action Services, and the chair of the Economic Development Committee. I have also served as both the council's vice president and president. I am committed, experienced, and a proven leader who wants to continue to work for you.
Thank you. Candidate Lowry.
Good evening, and I would like to also thank the Legal Women Voters, Ms. Davis, and moderator Inglehart for this opportunity this evening. I am a mother, wife, educator, entrepreneur, and lifelong community servant. My name is Regina Lynn Lowry, and I seek the seat of First Ward City Council. I'm involved in several things. I'm a Diamond Life member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, an organization committed to community uplift, as well as a member of the National Sorority of Phi Delta Kappa, which is a sorority of educators committed to the uplift of young people everywhere. As a business owner, I take pride in the mission of my company to get cleaner products into the hands of everyone with special focus on the health and wealth of Black and Indigenous people of color. I'm a co-founder of Yajade Lessons. That is a nonprofit organization created in Plainfield with my co-founder, and it's made up of volunteers throughout the city and beyond who know that we reach out to help others. And they come together with us to serve our seniors, which we've been doing since 2014, and the community overall. For over 25 years, I've served as an educator with Plainfield Public Schools, where I continue to serve now. During my time, I've worked with countless children and families in various avenues to help serve. I'm proud to have given many job opportunities to our children, as well as many scholarships, which I continue to do in leadership on the city level. I continue to give to Plainfield as Plainfield has given to me, and I ask you to support me on June 7th with your vote so we can continue to move Plainfield forward. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Candidate Graham.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. It's much appreciated, much needed, and is a great service to this community. I am Robert K. Graham, and I am running for first ward city council. Since the year 2006, I have always been visible and involved in this community. I began as a member of the Chamber of Commerce when it was led by Donna Albanese, when she was president at the time. Through volunteering, I became the vice president of events for the Plainfield Chamber of Commerce. Later on, I was then appointed to the zoning board by our former mayor, Mayor Sharon Robinson-Briggs. I've been on the zoning board since 2009, and today I serve as vice president of the Plainfield Zoning Board. In between 2006 and even today, I am still involved, still visible, still giving back to my community, still uplifting my community. I believe in the growth that the community is doing. I believe in what's going on in this community. I'm in love with the new residents that we have, because it's the new residents that are moving into Plainfield that allow our businesses to prosper. It is the blue-collar workers that I respect, because it's the blue-collar workers that are buying homes in Plainfield. They're choosing to live in Plainfield, and they're making awesome financial decisions. So many of my blue-collar constituents are in better financial health than their counterparts and their peers. I want to be a councilperson for everyone. No matter what your race is, I want to be your councilperson. I want to partner with each and every last group, every ethnicity, every religion. I want to make sure that I understand you, and I want to listen to you, because I can't lead if I don't listen. So I am here. I am ready to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates. We will now move on to the question round. We'll start with question one. I'll read the question first, and then I will call out the candidates who will answer in order. The question is, what are your plans to make Plainfield safer from crime? What are your plans to make Plainfield safer from crime? We'll start with candidate Wyatt.
Okay, thank you. That's a great question. So there's two ways that we can go about that. One is to look at the root causes of the crime that's happening here within the city of Plainfield. So if you look, we have houselessness. A lot of people don't have a place to stay. Job opportunities, they don't have that. The rents have been increasing within our city. That's also a huge problem. Then you take another step, and you look at the police department while talking to them. We cannot, we have to have to say this, we cannot pretend that it does not exist, because the crime does exist. We cannot sweep it under the rug. And I just also would like to say that the police officers here are some of the best, and last night, we heard that too. However, the steps that are taken here in the city of Plainfield are 13 steps to they get top pay. So we need to reduce that, because we keep losing our great officers to other towns, because we are not paying them. So we need to make sure that we increase the pay for our police officers that will keep them here, and that we also add more police presence within our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Lowry.
Thank you. I think two things that we can consider is, one of the things that is very important to me is rebuilding community. Once we have community, we have safety. We need to get back to the communal sense that we had in Plainfield, which is what I would like to see happen. Also, we need to look at, as my colleague just mentioned, financial disparity that is very real, and it hits the first ward very heavily in certain areas. We have rent increases that are causing problems and financial distress with our constituents, with our residents. We also have, like you mentioned, houselessness. So these type of things will cause crime to increase, and we just need to increase police presence. As Mr. Wyatt has stated, we have excellent police. We need to do what we can to keep them here. They're part of our community, and they want to serve our community. So once we're built again as a community, we look out for each other, and we have accountability for each other, and we hold our leaders accountable. And that's what we plan to do as a city council people. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Graham.
Over the years, crime has been trending down here in the city of Plainfield. In order to keep the city safe, we need to make sure that our streets are well-lit. We need to make sure that we are providing lighting and cameras for our business owners. We need to make sure that our police are in touch with our community. Community policing, we need to make sure that within our school system, we're really creating a strong partnership with parents. We need to make sure that our neighbors are very diligent in looking out for one another. That, of course, our homes, we encourage our homeowners to have cameras on their properties as well. We have some amazing housing stock. We're moving residents into the neighborhood, working residents. We provide some of the best affordable housing for our residents. And the key to it all is to make sure that our police are getting out here and getting to know the community, and the community knows our police officers and our council people and our leaders in town. Thank you.
Candidate Mills-Ransom.
Thank you. Actually, since 2014, overall crime has been reduced by 54% and violent crime by 33%. What we are doing as a council and continue to do with the leadership of the mayor is to support our police officers, support them through the equipment that they need and to hire as many new police officers as we can get from the academy. We now have a group that's in the academy that will come on board. Community policing is back in force. I think sometimes it's a matter of us knowing what actually is going on in Plainfield before speaking about some of the things. But those are facts. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. The second question is, what can be done to make Plainfield residents, in particular the Latino community, less vulnerable to harassment and attacks? What can be done to make the Plainfield residents, in particular the Latino community, less vulnerable to harassment and attacks? We'll start with candidate Graham.
We have to involve our Latino community within our leadership. We have to make sure that we communicate with them, that we listen to them. We can't take on the attitude that I hear from people in our community that they are too many Spanish people here, that there are too many Spanish businesses in the downtown. Because if those businesses were to just up and leave Plainfield, we would not have a downtown. So we have to recognize their importance, the importance of their presence. We have to recognize the fact that the businesses in Plainfield, they serve the Latino community. And so the best way to do that is to communicate with them, listen to them, give them more police presence, but make sure that we appoint our Latino leaders in the community so that they have representation, so that their voices are heard, because no one is better than the other here in this community, and everyone is equal in this community, no matter who you are.
Thank you. Candidate Mills-Ransom.
That's a question that is not easily answered. I think we are concerned about the safety of all. One of the things that I know we do as a city is to reach out to those Latino organizations that exist and have them as part of boards and commissions, and also to give information to us as best they can about what we can do. I would suggest that for all residents, that what you try to do is not go out by yourself alone to also try to be in at times when you know that there are some people that may be out there to harm you. But that is, I don't think anyone has a clear-cut answer to that. If they do, thank you, and I will listen to it. Okay.
Thank you. Candidate Wyatt.
Yes, so the answer is, we have to have equity and equality here. So equality is everyone gets a shoe. Equity is everyone gets a shoe that fits. And that's now what has been happening here within the city of Plainfield. If you look at the data, they are the majority here. So we have to start celebrating our neighbors and making sure that we treat them equally. They have to be celebrated. You have to make sure we treat them equally. So that's what we need to start doing, getting out in the community and making them feel welcome here. It's happening in the school system slowly, and we need to continue that here within the city and be partners with them and not have what's going on now where the brand that's in place now are, you know, they're showing people, young people, sexism and ageism. So if people look at that and see that that's condone, and nobody speaks up for that, doesn't matter if you're a teacher, a preacher, or an attorney, wrong is wrong. We cannot condone those type of things and those type of behaviors, and that's how you bring people in and make them feel like they belong. Thank you.
Candidate Lowry.
Thank you for this question. As an educator, I face this every day with making sure our children understand that inclusion means celebrating the differences while accepting the diversity. So that's something that can be done on a community level in knocking on doors and talking to constituents who are Latinx. And they shared some things with us about feeling included, feeling a part of the community, and to be treated as such, and also understanding that these disparities go beyond cultural and race. It also goes to speaking to what we mentioned earlier about economic disparities and equal opportunities on all levels. So it's important for us to not see the Latinx community as a subset of our community, but as our community. We need to treat each other as whole, community services, community people and residents, and work together and make sure that we are coming together to learn from each other versus trying to tear away from each other. And that can be done through conversation, effective communication, and leadership outreach to get out here, knock on these doors, walk these streets, and talk to each other. Thank you.
Thank you. The third question, how do you plan to communicate your goals and accomplishments with the Plainfield residents, including non-English-speaking residents? How do you plan to communicate your goals and accomplishments with Plainfield residents, including non-English-speaking residents? We'll start with candidate Graham.
Yes. To answer that question would simply be to go where they are. But to elaborate on what I mean by that is, not everyone uses Facebook. Not everyone is on Instagram. Not everyone reads their email, and not everyone goes to church. And so I would make it my business to go where they are so that I can create this communication with the residents, with the voters, to help them understand my agenda, to help them understand me and my upbringing. So, you know, to elaborate more on that, you know, just to get with someone who speaks Spanish, who will be consistent in helping me communicate with the Spanish community and other important things to make sure that the word gets out in knocking on doors, speaking, having meetings, hosting breakfasts, lunches, dinners, and hosting events. Thank you.
Candidate Mills-Ransom.
For me, I would have to have someone who speaks Spanish along with me. I did take it in high school and college and did very well. But it's different taking Castilian Spanish than to speak all the dialects that are here. As the city, we have Spanish interpreters. The city council has a translation process. The communications department puts out all of the information. It puts out in English and Spanish. So does the Department of Public Works. And also, I will say again that we have groups that work with us, and we have a Hispanic commission that helps. So there's more that could be done, but I've already said for me, it's a matter of probably taking Spanish, and some of the other people may need to do the same.
Candidate Lowry.
I think, well, we're already on a good start, which I'm glad that it was mentioned about getting out to our Latinx residents. And in my candidacy, I've been campaigning along with not just Latinx people who speak Spanish, but those who have a shared vision with me. They're actually part of my team. So as they go out and speak to everyone, I'm side by side with them, and they're understanding that I truly want to know what's happening from each and every person in this first ward, because we all have to come together with a voice. What you speak, how you speak, what language you speak is not going to be an indicator of how you're heard. All voices will be heard, and we need to just make sure immersion is the key and not to do it once or twice, or just to have, you know, a sheet of paper that may you flip over and see a different language. We need them to see everyone as the same, and that we're out there working together. So I'm glad that I already have stakeholders working with me to get the message out, that every voice will be heard through this leadership. Thank you.
Candidate Wyatt.
Yes, so one is transparency, honesty, being available. I'm at every event that we have here within the city of Plainfield. So talking to our neighbors, like we said earlier, making them feel comfortable. The key thing is listening. So we have to listen to them, so we can't talk at our neighbors. We have to find that common ground and get to know them and make them feel comfortable. Once we do that, we can get past the language barriers and those type of things. But like my colleague stated, we do have a Latinx community with on our team here. We've been listening to them. We built the platform. We make sure that they had input and what they asked them, what they wanted to see within the city of Plainfield. Because like stated earlier, they are the majority. We have to make sure that we are treating them as such. And so I still have time. I'm sorry, but while I'm canvassing and knocking on doors, you know, we talk to people, and they say they have no clue who the council members are within the area. So that's a huge problem for them. So they say they have concerns, but they don't know who to talk to. And, you know, we know some of the issues here within the city. If they're already afraid to reach out to people, it's important that they know who represents them in the city of Plainfield. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. The fourth question, what are your top two priorities that you plan to initially address if you are elected to city council? What are your top two priorities that you plan to initially address if you are elected to city council? We'll start with candidate Lowry.
One of the, or two of the things that came up in my, talking to my neighbors in the first ward, have been the things you mentioned earlier, safety and traffic. Their concerns lie with, they want a little more police presence, because they're feeling like some things that are happening in their communities. While they may not be large crime issues in every part and every district, there's still some concerns that are there. So I would like to address safety as one of the concerns, because everyone should feel safe to walk out in this neighborhood. It's an excellent, beautiful neighborhood, beautiful city, so everyone should feel comfortable doing that. Also, traffic, a lot of the first ward, as you know, a lot of construction is going on in the first ward. And so there's a concern with traffic, that is, the things that are happening with that traffic, the whole dumps of delays, also as a part of the traffic, the parking situations that are coming from that. So that is something that based on my talking to my neighbors as I'm canvassing, that those are things that would be first and foremost for me in that first ward. Thank you.
Candidate Wyatt.
Yes, the number one priority is fiscal responsibility. We must stop the wasteful spending that's taking place at the city hall here in Plainfield. So we need to take a close look at the budget, listen to the people that provide the information on the seatback, and see where we can cut the wasteful spending, because it's the taxpayers' money here. People that are homeowners are sharing that burden, and that's a huge concern that they have. So the number one priority is the fiscal responsibility. The second is the quality of life here within our city. So talking to our neighbors here, we talk about the dirt bikes and the ATVs, people ignoring the traffic laws, code enforcement. Code enforcement is a huge concern within every door. Are we not going to be hearing about that? You know, just making sure that we're listening to our constituents and responding to them and making sure that also we stop the rubber stamping, because that's another thing that the constituents are completely sick and tired of. Thank you.
Candidate Graham.
Yes, safety is one of my two top priorities. I believe in the good old days when we, as children, used to walk to the store. I believe, you know, in the good old days where our older neighbors would send us to the store to buy things. And I want to make sure that Plainfield is that community where our children can walk to and from the store safe, unbothered, and feel protected. I want to make sure that we treat our police officers extremely We treat our police officers extremely well. When we do that, and when we have a clean town, our police officers would opt to stay in Plainfield even after their tenure. And that to me is paramount. Second thing is recreation. I want to make sure that we partner. With performing arts schools that have established programs. And perhaps maybe we can send one, two, or three kids to an established school for martial arts, for dancing. For dancing and other things like that.
Uh, candidate Mills Ransom.
I think I will answer that question this way, that the city is financially solvent. Um. We have a great rating, the top rating with Moody's. And we have zero audit findings. Uh, there is no. Just dealing with putting money out there for no good reasons. So I think my first priority is that we get the information out to people. Uh, more broadly than it is getting out because there's a lot of misinformation there. Safety is important to all of us, and I think I did address that the council is doing what it can. To make the very good police staff, uh. Release department we have even better and up to full capacity. So I think the truth is what uh is important.
Thank you, candidates. The fifth question. Now that cannabis is legal in New Jersey, how will you help ensure considerate and safe use? Especially at open areas like parks and around schools. Now that cannabis is legal in New Jersey, how will you help ensure considerate and safe use? Especially at open areas like parks and around schools. We'll start with candidate Lowry.
I believe that code enforcement is going to be key and essential. When you say schools, of course, my alarms go up because I'm always concerned about. First and foremost, the safety of our children, and then also the safety of any seniors in our community. So. That's going to be something that needs to rely heavily on code enforcement, uh, communication and education of laws because there is a lot of. Unclear understanding about the law surrounding cannabis in New Jersey. So that's going to be an opportunity for educating. Our residents, but also making sure that everyone remains safe during that time. And also, we need to always go back to checks and balances to make sure when something is not in order. We need to be available to help clarify that and enforce whatever is going to be best for everyone. So I think that this is something that we all need to learn and work through together. We have to make sure that we're standing forward. For the safety of children, seniors, and all citizens. Thank you.
Candidate Wyatt.
Yes, so now that it is legal, uh, which I am for because I know that it will create tax dollars within our community. Uh, we have to, like my colleague said, code enforcement. That's going to be a critical and crucial point. Uh, making sure that we have ordinances and municipal codes and taking a look at other states where other towns are doing it correctly. Um, I have three children, so, uh, you know, we talk about kids being around that and being in. Around that and being influenced by that. I take that very seriously, but I do know that there are states and towns who are getting that right. So we don't have to recreate the will, but just making sure that the code enforcement, the police officers, the municipal codes and ordinances are done correctly.
Thank you. Candidate Mills Ransom.
Uh, the city of Plainfield is taking the cannabis legislation very seriously. To the point that we hired, um. A cannabis enforcement officer, whatever, uh, who. I would say, um, his key job is to deal with all people who are interested in coming to Plainfield. Uh, the cannabis to put them through the test that the state has directed us to do. I would think that it would be naive to think that cannabis is not here already. We are now in a situation where we can be regulated and we can get some funds from it. So, uh, it's the same thing, having police officers out there doing their jobs. And having people being responsible. It's nothing different.
Candidate Graham.
I'm one who has never, uh, liked cannabis, never liked the smell of it. Uh, however, it is part of our community and I must embrace it and respect it. The solution to your question would be to increase no smoking zones. And really make sure that our business owners are being responsible with their crowd control, with the behavior of their customers. And whatever they can't control, the the police department, there has to be a strategy. And a technique as to how to, uh, deal with those types of situations in their approach. Uh, and how educated the customer is. So. Cannabis is creating job opportunities for our residents. It's creating economic empowerment for our residents. It's here to stay. We have to embrace it. No one's better than anyone else. And we just have to be proactive.
Thank you, candidates. The sixth question. How will you work with the mayor's office to uphold the budget to meet the needs of Plainfield residents? How will you work with the mayor's office to uphold the budget to meet the needs of Plainfield's residents? We'll start with candidate Mills Ransom.
Okay, the mayor's office, or the council, I should say. Has a citizens budget advisory committee who works with the council to deal with. Overviewing the budget. We do get the budget from the administration, but the budget is a council responsibility. So there are hearings on each part of the budget. The departments come before us, questions are asked. Um, decisions are made. In fact, on the twenty-fifth, I believe, we will have feedbacks. That citizens budget advisory committee, we will have their recommendations, uh, to the budget. And the council will eventually vote on the budget. It is not that it is done in isolation. I am still amazed that the misinformation that's out here. We'll have to do our best to get the right information out.
Thank you. Candidate Graham.
Yes, the best option would be to listen to the community. Uh, as team members of our mayor and as city council members. Um, it is our responsibility to listen to the community. It is our responsibility to make sure that the community is aware. Of of what's in the budget. Um, I would take it upon myself as a council member to dissect the budget. And question things that I don't understand about the budget. Uh, neither one of us are coming in to, uh, this, uh, role as a city council member. Being a master of the budget. So there's going to be a lot to learn. However, what's more important is we have to listen to the community. We have to make sure that we are transparent as leaders and that the community understands the budget, how it works. What's in it, where the money comes from, and where the money goes. So once there's more understanding. Then we can all collaborate and make a better place in Plainfield. Thank you.
Candidate Lowry.
Thank you. Any good governing body must have accountability. Checks and balances is the method that I use to gauge that accountability. So the research and communication are those main tools. I tend and tend to research issues to be informed on the various aspects, to be able to be, to make informed decisions on behalf of the first ward. That research includes getting feedback from residents on topics that impact the first ward. And in that communication within the council, it needs to be honest, open, and it needs to be held with a collaborative spirit with the intention of moving the entire city forward. Effective communication also calls for deliberate and insightful questions that are designed to consider. Be considered through very varied lenses. So we have to look at things from someone else's perspective. As we spoke about earlier about diversity and so forth. We have to look at things through varied lenses. We can't just bring our own experiences. While they're important, they can be the only way we look at something. So I'm poised to ask those insightful questions and be intentional, very intentional, building upon a legacy that's already been started in this first ward. And getting answers and follow-ups that is needed for the first ward. And I'm ready to do that with transparency and accessibility. Thank you.
Candidate Wyatt.
Yes, so it's no secret that, uh, the mayor and I do not see eye to eye on many topics. However. Progress for Plainfield is the priority, so I can work with anybody. Uh, in regards to the budget. Uh, when we pick the seat back, that's a representative of the council, so they get to select someone that reviews the budget. We have to take a step further than that. And just like we go around now knocking on doors, asking people for their vote, we have to also ask them. What do they, how do they feel? What do they feel about the direction that Plainfield is going in? What do they want to see? What priorities should be listed, uh, ahead of? What's the priority when it comes to the budget? So those are the type of things that needs to be done. Uh, for instance, uh, fifty-one percent of the people. Uh, did not see eye to eye with the leadership last year. However. The the leadership in place continue to move on as business as usual, uh, which you cannot do. And so you have to start listening to your constituents and ask them what do they think is best for the city of Plainfield and how the budget should be spent. As well as educating them on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. The seventh question. What are two capital improvement or development projects that need to be prioritized? What are two capital improvement or development projects that need to be prioritized? We'll start with candidate Mills Ransom.
Apparently, the capital improvement projects that we're working on, one would be the fire department. One of the buildings that's important, that's being worked on. Another capital improvement is dealing with. Making sure that all the buildings are safe, and that's where money goes to. Um, we also are concerned about the environment and. We will be moving to do some electric cars and stations. Um. I think right now, that's what's happening with some of the capital improvement funds. And I had fifteen seconds. Okay. I don't have anything else to say. That's good.
That's fine. We might get to another question. Candidate Lowry.
Yes, two things. One is, uh, sitting right in the heart, you know, of the first ward. We need to look at revitalizing the downtown area because that's something that, um, is important to a lot of people. A lot of the neighbors, when we knock on doors, they're concerned about having somewhere where they can walk safely and enjoy. And also have more business opportunities, including the businesses that are there, to have more business opportunities as well as. Fun and recreational activities to do, and also job opportunities. So that's one, uh, area. Another area is to increase recreation for youth and seniors. I've said it before, it's no secret. In this community that I hold the seniors very dear, and I, of course, advocate and hold the youth very close to heart. So. I'm always looking for avenues to help increase. Opportunities for our seniors and for our youth. So if we can begin to build up recreational. And along with recreational for the youth, also more educational opportunities through these outlets because it's always great. When children are able to grow and learn while having a good time. And so those areas, thank you.
Candidate Wyatt.
Yeah, so capital improvements that are priorities, one, a recreational center for our youth and our seniors. Uh, if you look at what's going on now, we don't have YMCA within our city. We don't have the YWCA. So outside of recreation, we also do not have a place for those who are experiencing houselessness. Um, so the term is being used loosely now that we have a renaissance going on. When I hear the term renaissance, I think of the Harlem Renaissance that took place. If you look at the Harlem Renaissance, it was a new spirit of self-determination. And pride, a new social consciousness, and a new commitment to political activism, that is extriding the arts and those type of things. So if you look at our downtown. Which is the second one, uh, it needs to be revitalized. So we need to make sure that we have retail and our downtown needs to be revitalized. So those are the capital improvements that I would be looking forward to making a priority. Thank you.
Candidate Graham.
Yes, uh, so in being consistent and staying on task with our new master plan. I'd like to add, uh, East Second Street to our special improvement district. Uh, we have some amazing businesses on East Second Street that are in the first ward. That a lot of people don't know about here in the city of Plainfield. We have Jessica's Cafe. We have Jay's Secret. And we have Adrian's Catering, uh, that's on, uh, East Second Street. These are. Some of the most amazing restaurants in the state of New Jersey. And it's important to me that I make sure that where they do business is safe. I make sure that where they do business, their customers feel comfortable with going to. Uh, my second improvement would be wifi citywide, lighting, cameras. And adding more police to our police force.
Thank you, candidates. The next question is motorbikes are popular but are not permitted on public streets. What are your views on keeping them off public streets? Motorbikes are popular but not permitted on public streets. What are your views on keeping them off public streets? We'll start with candidate Lowry.
As I mentioned earlier, uh, I believe more police presence would help to deter. The police, the the motorbikes, that's been something that is very concerning. I've also lost some former students to the the dirt bike. Uh, pandemic as it is right now. Um, so I think another piece would be education. When our students, when our children know. What is not good for them and to understand the ills that can come from these activities takes a further way. So. And also education goes a long way. And again, police presence. And maybe even having some, something that could, um, speed. I have one, a few of my, uh. Residents mentioned speed bumps. So just some safety, some, just some safety parameters around that to deter. From the use of those, uh, on the residential streets. Thank you.
Candidate Mills Ransom.
Thank you. Um, motorbikes are not permitted. We have an ordinance against it. Enforcement is. Part of the issue. Speed bumps are coming. Uh, maybe we would have less, uh, time to ride up and down on dirt bikes or illegal bikes. If some of these, if the two community schools that we have would be open. So that it could be used by our students, uh, and the public. That was the reason for bonding for those spaces. Uh, so don't think that. The council has not moved on in ordinance with these and that the police department doesn't know about it. What people need to do is call or email when they see and also try to get a picture or a number. And we do put patrols out there. So, um, again, I'm just amazed at what is not known here. Okay.
Candidate Graham.
Let's be critical thinkers here. Let's, let's put it into perspective. How do you enforce? Getting the dirt bikes off the street without risking someone getting hurt or losing their lives? Let's think outside the box. Let's do something different. Let's stop having the same conversation. Year after year after year about the same thing with no relevant solutions. Let's talk about what would another municipality do, right? What was done when skateboarding was in the streets causing havoc? Well, some municipalities, they built a skate park. Why can't we explore giving these gentlemen and ladies somewhere to practice? They are developing a self-developed skill set. They are fixing their own bikes, their mechanics, they can be professional stunt people. So they're developing a skill that we're not teaching them. However, it is a havoc to our community. The solution sounds like we need to give them somewhere to go to do these things.
Thank you. Uh, candidate Wyatt.
Yes, so the, uh. Making phone calls and sending emails, that isn't working. Uh, recently, I seen one of my neighbors post on Facebook. Uh, recently, I seen one of my neighbors post on Facebook, um, someone doing donuts in a parking lot. Uh, they post pictures of the dirt bikes, of people riding the dirt bikes and ATVs, avoiding all the traffic laws. Uh, people walk their dogs, children are playing, walking in the streets, and dirt bikes and ATVs are just zooming past all the time. Someone could get seriously hurt. So we cannot sit by and be idle and say that, oh, we want to do this, or we're trying to do this. We have to make sure that code enforcement, if there's an ordinance in place, and it needs to be enforced by any means necessary, because someone can get seriously hurt. And enough is enough with the uh, the hopes and dreams of stopping this issue. Blood will be on your hands for those people that are there who sit by and no longer try to push this issue to make it stop.
Thank you, candidates. I will now ask the candidates to provide their closing statements. They will have two minutes each, and we will start with candidate Graham.
Okay, so um, I have been visible. I have been here for my community, hosting events and sponsoring events such as the Plainfield Idol Contest, uh, hosting events for the Plainfield Chamber of Commerce, hosting events such as the State of New Jersey Urban School District Address, where I bring out our powerful speaker, Barudy Cofele, to speak and empower our parents. Um, and so many other community members do attend. And that is just to make sure that our parents have the tools and, and the ideas and techniques to just be better parents and, and, and and focus on new ideas to enhance our parenting in our community, to strengthen our community. I sit on the zoning board in the city of Plainfield. All of our boards, we have the smartest people on our boards. I am here for all of my constituents, just like I always have been. I'm no new face to this community. All of my energy, uh, and everyone has witnessed it since the year two thousand four. I am running for city council on column A. I will suggest that all of us get involved to get the vote out and vote for column A to keep Plainfield moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Lowry.
My hard work and dedication to Plainfield has been longstanding and unwavable. I'm ingrained in Plainfield, and Plainfield is ingrained in me. As a proud graduate of Morgan State University and HBCU, I brought my degree back home to serve as a mathematics teacher, then professional school counselor, which I serve as now, to our children and to our community, because my outreach goes beyond the schools, it goes to the community. I'm a co-founder, as I mentioned earlier, of Ajade Lessons, a nonprofit organization. It is set specifically to serve Plainfield community, and I've started that with one of my classmates from Plainfield High School. So we all are immersed in that community. I've also originated the Youth Engagement Forum, which is a, a forum for students to come out and hear about the importance of engagement in our community, and to hear about organizations that already do that, so they can learn how to tie in to those activities. Having attended Jefferson Elementary, Hubbard Middle, and then graduated from Plainfield High School, I am the promise of those who've laid the foundation of hard work for this city. I'm ongoing return on investment that Plainfield has made in me. I'll expand upon what I've done to work in this community. For all the work I do, I'll expand on that on a more political level, on this council level. Also, I will continue financially. I already host many scholarships, but I intend to also increase that once I'm part of the city council with your vote. I intend to pay back and play forward on the investment of this beloved Queen City with interest. So I ask on June seventh, you cast your vote for column B for progress for this beautiful city of Plainfield. Thank you. Regina Lynn Lowry.
Thank you. Candidate Mills Ransom.
A few years ago, a vision for Plainfield's renaissance was cast. Through collaboration, cooperation, and intentional work on the part of the council and the administration, our city is experiencing an undeniable renaissance. There is still work to do. I am seeking reelection as one who is committed to seeing the vision fully realized. Most of the phone calls or emails I receive from my constituents require that I have a working relationship with members of the administration to get things done. I have that relationship. More importantly, Plainfield has a great working relationship with the county, the state, and members of the federal government. I understand that meaningful and sustainable change requires a shared vision between the council and the administration. Plainfield's significant growth and progress is a result of that intentional work toward the realization of the shared vision. I am proud to be a member of the team. At the end of the day, we, the council, are protectors of you, our residents. You find voice and recourse through us, and this is a responsibility that I do not take lightly. I have fought for what I believe to be right my entire life, and I seek reelection for the seat of councilperson at large for second and third wards. I am ready to continue to fight for you. I ask for your vote on or before Tuesday, June seventh. Vote for the Renaissance of Plainfield to continue. Vote column A.
Thank you. Candidate Wyatt.
Thank you. We've repeatedly heard of the progress taking place here in Plainfield in the Renaissance. But the fact is, that's just not the reality for the people living here. I will always be an advocate for development, but it has to benefit the people of the Queen City. Plainfield is not Jersey City. For far too long, portions of our city council have not represented the constituents. Given the opportunity, I will serve as a voice for the people, like I have my entire life. I pledge to address each issue with a collective, data-driven approach. I also vow to never make a promise that I cannot come to fruition and to remain transparent and honest in my goals as a representative for the second and third wards. During the mayor debates, I invited everyone to think back to two thousand and seventeen. Mayor Matt and the members of the council voted to give themselves a hundred and fifteen percent salary increase. On November two thousand and twenty-one, they did it again. With the exception of councilperson Davis and McKenna, who share my beliefs that the public service shouldn't be for profit. One year ago, I pledged to donate a portion of my salary if elected, and this evening, I do the same. For me, this has never been about power or the money. It's always been about the people, and it's time for a city council that doesn't vote according to political affiliations, but rather for the people. On June seventh, I'm asking for you to vote for me, Richard Wyatt, column B, for the Plainfield City Council. Thank you once again, League of Women Voters. Thank you for using this platform so that the constituents can hear from us. Have a great one.
Thank you, candidates. Thank you, everyone, for participating in tonight's forum, especially those people who are watching this event. I'd like to turn things over to Ms. Davis from the Plainfield League of Women Voters.
Thank you, Laura, Laura Engelhardt, our moderator and the Plainfield City Council candidate for the Lightning Forum. For those that were unable to watch live tonight, encourage your Plainfield friends and family to watch a recording of this forum on the Plainfield League of Voters YouTube channel and on our Facebook page, League of Women Voters of Plainfield Area, New Jersey. The League of Women Voters welcomes men and women. If you are interested in our local organization, comment on our Facebook page or send an email to L W B N J Plainfield at gmail dot com. Regarding voting for this election, registered voters can apply for vote by mail, vote by ballot, by following instructions found on vote dot NJ dot gov, or contacting the Union County Clerk at U C N J dot org. In-person early voting is an option that enables all registered voters to cast their ballots in person using a voting machine from June third to June fifth. In-person early voting hours are ten AM to eight PM on Friday and Saturday, and ten AM to six PM on Sunday at seven locations in Union County. You can also vote at your polling place on Election Day, June seventh, from six AM to eight PM. Thank you for joining us, and have a good night.